Meeting, we hope all of you had a great Labor Day weekend and we welcome you to this September the ninth, 2021 city council meeting. It is officially called to order at eight thirty-two a.m. And as usual, we will start with our chaplain prayer and pledges. So if I would ask Gary Jenkins and Marcella Jenkins to please come forward and lead us in prayer and pledges.
Good morning, everyone. Will you bow your heads as I pray? Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measures of health we need to fulfill our callings, for substance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you as well for the freedom to embrace you. Thank you for loving us even so, from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I'm asking that you will graciously grant them wisdom to govern among the conflicting interests and issues of our times. A sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is an honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what will please you and what will benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of San Angelo. Lord, I ask you to hold back the pandemic. Have mercy on us, Lord. It is in your most blessed name I pray. Amen.
Please repeat after me the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We have several proclamations today, so we will start with the proclamation recognizing our September eleventh, 2021, as the twentieth anniversary of nine eleven. And Chief Dunn, I think you're here. I saw you at someplace. Would you please come forward? And even though it says that you're not going to be here and that we're not going to give this to you until Saturday, we are going to do it, okay? So we're just going to change it up a bit. What I think is most important, that is that every year we have found that fewer and fewer people tend to set aside and remember what happened on nine eleven. We believe strongly that what happened on nine eleven, two thousand and one, is something that we must never, ever forget. And those individuals who gave their lives, sacrificed their lives for all of us and the freedoms that we have today, we must continue to honor and celebrate all of our first responders and all of those who continue to give us the peace, the freedom, and the comfort that when we go to bed at night, we know that we're safe. In observance of the anniversary of the September eleventh, two thousand and one attacks on America, which killed citizens from ninety-two different countries, we hereby recognize this day in tribute to those lost and injured on nine eleven and the many who gave themselves in service to their communities and to this country in the aftermath of the attacks. The events of September eleventh, two thousand and one instantly transformed everyone's lives, some through personal loss and many others through an unfamiliar sense of individual and national vulnerability. An unprecedented historic bonding of Americas arose from the collective shock unifying the country in an outpouring of national spirits, pride, selflessness, generosity, courage, and service. Many brave people heroically, tirelessly, and courageously participated in extraordinary, difficult, and dangerous rescue and recovery efforts, in some cases voluntarily putting their own well-being at risk. On September eleventh, two thousand and nine, the president issued the Patriot Day proclamation officially and permanently designating September eleventh as a national day of service and remembrance, and calling upon Americans to participate in this observance through moments of silence, flying of the flag of the United States at half-staff, as well as community service interitable activities in tribute and remembrance. Now therefore I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby recognize September eleventh, twenty twenty-one, as the twentieth anniversary of nine eleven, and proclaim September eleventh, twenty twenty-one, as a national day of service and remembrance in San Angelo and encourage all citizens to join me in this worthy observance and witness whereof. I have hereunto set my hand and have caused the official seal of the city of San Angelo to be affixed this ninth day of September, twenty twenty-one.
Could you please offer some words?
Good morning. I would like to welcome everyone here to our nine eleven ceremony on Saturday. It will, the community band will begin playing at seven o'clock that evening and play till seven forty-five. The nine eleven ceremony will start at eight p.m. that night. It will be different than the ones in the past. There'll be videos, testimony, couple speeches. So if you show up at seven, it'll probably end about eight forty-five, but it will be different and it will be a good ceremony this coming Saturday evening at the River Stage.
And I truly ask that as many of you as possible, please show up. In the past, every year, we seem to have had fewer and fewer people attend the ceremony, and we just can't, as Americans, as citizens, stop paying attention and honoring those and our country and what it means to each of our lives. So please, I ask of you to attend the ceremony Saturday night, seven o'clock at the River Stage. We need each and every one of you there to help honor all of those who continue to serve and all of those who gave their lives in service to all of us. So thank you. I also want to thank Goodfellow Air Force Base. They had a nine eleven ceremony yesterday afternoon, and it was really terrific. I'm sorry it wasn't open to the public because the speeches, there was wonderful speech given from, I guess he was a sergeant captain, and went through his, what was going on in the lives of many of the fire departments, many of the ladders the day before, and then what happened that day. And I know that if you're watching television right now, there's been tremendous amount of coverage and some very personal stories that up until now were not shared, and I think it's worth watching and hearing and listening to the lives that were changed forever, the impact on their families and those that they work with. So please, help us in remembering nine eleven, Saturday night, seven o'clock. Our next proclamation is of September sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, as Southside Lions Club Day. So I see some Lion Club members in the back. Would you please come forward? For over sixty years, the Southside Lions Club has conducted celebrations commemorating D S E C S with fiestas, patricias?
Patrias.
Patrias, okay. My, my language, Hispanic language is very weak, so help me out on this, everyone. The Southside Lions Club has been responsible for keeping alive in the hearts of the citizens of San Angelo, the heritage and history of our neighbor of the South, from which so much of our culture is derived. Only this symbolic fiesta of the Southside Lions Club remains of a historic tradition that has held its own in the Concho Valley and specifically in San Angelo, Texas. Now therefore I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim September the sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, as Southside Lions Club Day in San Angelo, Texas, and ask all citizens to recognize the club's contribution to the city through its efforts and keep it alive, our Mexican heritage. And witness whereof, I have unto set my hand and have caused the official seal of the city of San Angelo to be affixed this ninth day of September, twenty twenty-one.
On behalf of the Southside Lions Club, we invite everyone to join us September eighteenth at the Paseo de Santa Angela. It'll be a one-day event and we'll start at five o'clock and go into eleven-thirty. And I also want to thank the city council and the mayor for recognizing our club. And there are so many clubs out there and everybody works out, but we always say we're number one here. Thank you, and thank you again, and we'd love to see everyone at our Fiesta de Patrias. Thank you.
twenty twenty-one, as Lilly Fest Week, honoring the contributions made by Kenneth C. Landon. And I know there's some folks here for the Lilly Fest. If you'd please come forward. Larry, I see you. Come on. Limping a little today. Lilly Fest began in two thousand and five to celebrate the International Wally Lily Collection and recognize the great work of Mr. Kenneth C. Landon to create, sustain, and display the world-renowned collection here in San Angelo. This year, Lilly Fest will honor and remember Mr. Landon for his tireless and masterful work hibernizing lilies and bringing international status to our city. Here is a short list of Mr. Landon's accomplishments. He hybridized one of the most popular water lilies, the award-winning Texas Dawn, designated as the official state water lily in two thousand and eleven. He authored several botanical papers on the genus Nymphaea. He was a founding member of the International Water Lily and Water Gardening Society and inducted into our, into their Hall of Fame in two thousand and one, as well as curating one of the city's most important sites for decades. Mr. Landon's accomplishments and impact on our city are immeasurable. Not only did he provide the immaculate water lily collection, he also provided several of the regional fireworks shows, including those displayed at the annual Pops concert in Lake Nazareth, the Fourth of July celebration. Mr. Landon used his knowledge of chemistry to create stunning beauty both in the sky and in the water. Now therefore I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim September eighteenth through September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, as Lilly Fest Week in San Angelo, Texas, and encourage our citizens to attend Lilly Fest at the International Water Lily Collection on September eighteenth and celebrate the life and work of Kenneth C. Landon. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and have caused the official seal of the city of San Angelo to be affixed this ninth day of September, twenty twenty-one.
The third weekend in September has always been our Water Lily Festival, and we'll continue that. We are going to do it in honor of Ken and because we miss Ken and because of all of the things that he has accomplished. As I was looking at our signs and there's water lily there, and I can tell you that every Chamber of Commerce brochure I've ever seen has water lilies on it. So San Angelo has always supported the water lilies, and we really appreciate that. Ken could never have accomplished what he did without the support of Carl White and all of the members of the city parks department. So this award, Carl, is for all of, all of us that have helped with Ken over the years. Ken would have been extremely humbled by this, and he would have said, I don't deserve this, but I can tell you that everybody here would agree that Ken really did support San Angelo and did some wonderful work for San Angelo. So we truly thank y'all, and we hope y'all come out on September the eighteenth for our Water Lily Festival. It'll just be from nine until noon, and we'll have some music and some cookies and doughnuts, coffee, and we really hope everybody will come and help us remember Ken Landon. Thank y'all so much for this award.
twenty-one, is National Hispanic Heritage Month. And I know we have folks here in the audience for that as well. Are you the audience? National Hispanic Heritage Month originated in nineteen sixty-eight as a celebration of National Hispanic Heritage Week with a proclamation by President Lyndon B. Johnson. In nineteen eighty-eight, Congress amended the original public law creating National Hispanic Heritage Month. President George H.W. Bush issued the first proclamation for National Hispanic Heritage Month on September fourteenth, nineteen eighty-nine. The annual proclamation designates the month as a thirty-one-day period beginning September fifteenth through October fifteenth. Hispanic Heritage Month recognizes the Hispanic people's most valuable assets, shared culture, history, knowledge, and sense of community. Hispanic citizens of San Angelo and the Concho Valley have made significant contributions by way of business leadership, civil service, culture, education, military, ranching, and religion. The theme of this year's observance is Esperanza, a celebration of Hispanic heritage and hope. It is with progress and strong hope for the future that younger generations will embrace their culture and follow the achievements of past Hispanic leaders. Now therefore I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, as National Hispanic Heritage Month in San Angelo, Texas, and encourage our citizens to learn more about the history and rich contributions to our society by Hispanic and Latino Americans.
I'd like to invite everyone to participate at the kickoff celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month on September the sixteenth on the steps of City Hall. Back in twenty nineteen, we did the first one, which propelled us to, motivated us to begin an initiative to create a Hispanic Heritage Museum and Cultural Center. This organization that people that you see behind us are instrumental in helping us move that, that goal forward. So please join us on the sixteenth to kick off. It's going to start at ten o'clock. The mayor will be there, as well as entertainers. We've got the Damitas and Charitos from Fort Concho will be performing, as well as Rita Cappaccino, and our distinguished Dr. John Klingerman will be giving a dissertation on the history of Hispanic Heritage Month. So we hope you can join us on the sixteenth. Thank you so much.
I have some individuals, some folks here who would like to come forward and accept this proclamation and offer some words of encouragement. I don't know about everybody else, but my allergies are kicking in pretty good, so I've got that dry mouth thing from taking an allergy pill, so excuse me for stumbling over a couple of things today. National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month is intended to help promote awareness surrounding each of the suicide prevention resources available in our community. Mental health is essential to our overall health, and the importance of tending to mental health has become even more important. Every person can play a role in suicide prevention by knowing the signs of suicide, finding the words to support a friend or family member, and by reaching out to and promoting local and national resources. The San Angelo community in support of National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month chooses to publicly state and place our full support behind local educators, coaches, mental health professionals, leaders, police officers, and parents as partners in supporting our city by simply being available to one another. The City of San Angelo encourages all residents to take the time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors over the next few days, and to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture that they deem appropriate. A simple phone call, message, handshake, or hug can go a long way towards helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. Therefore I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim September, twenty twenty-one, as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in San Angelo, Texas, and encourage citizens to learn how to talk about suicide and help those around us in need.
Thank you for this opportunity to come out and speak about suicide. I know sometimes just the word suicide can be a little bit scary, but we're actually asking folks to, if you suspect or see that someone is struggling with mental health issues, depression, or is talking about suicide, the best thing to do is just ask. We're not going to create more suicides by asking about it. In fact, the research shows that by asking, we are probably preventing more suicides. San Angelo, for as small as it is, has a large prevalence of suicide, and that is why with our collaborative partners from MHMR, Goodfellow Air Force Base, West Texas Counseling and Guidance, and also our mental health deputies, we work collaboratively, and we are trying everything in our, in our power to end suicide. And that's why the framework that we use is called Zero Suicide. And so if you guys have any questions, if you would like some trainings, please contact us at MHMR. And again, thank you for this opportunity.
I just want to say, that's Tanya Boyett. She is one of our, she is over at Crossed Services at MHMR, and MHMR is all about, we're actually updating our name to my health, my resources, for the meaning of MHMR. We want to be a resource. We want to have good health in our community, good mental health, and we're very appreciative of our partnership with Goodfellow, with West Texas Counseling, and with many other partners in our community, promoting good health and suicide awareness. So thank you very much.
We're very thankful also for the great community partnership we have as part of Goodfellow Air Force Base and how much they welcome us all the time with everything that we do, because the only way we're really going to tackle this issue of suicide in our community is by working together and being connected. And so at Goodfellow, that is one of our big, strong suits, is being connected, we are family, and taking care of each other. And so I loved how she said, you know what, reach out to your neighbors, your loved one, that simple hug or hello can go a long ways. And so thank you for helping celebrate it with us.
We will now move into the public comment section of the agenda. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the dais, begin by stating their name and address or single-member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. First thing I want to talk about today is really the issue of COVID-19 and the continual growth in the number of cases that we have here in San Angelo, Texas. As many of you are aware, our statistics in Tom Green County, whether it is suicide, we're higher than the state of Texas, and whether it is COVID-19 in terms of vaccinations, we are below the state's average. We have some strong-minded individuals here in this city, and we appreciate their strength. But what we want to make sure that we do is that we take personal responsibility to ensure that our friends, our neighbors, and our family members feel safe around us. We don't need to issue a mask mandate in order to take personal responsibility. The governor has been very clear about his position, and that is, we know what the rules are, we know what the standard is, we know what we can do to help protect each and every one of us. And it starts with wearing a mask. It starts with social distancing. It's about not being in large groups, and if you are going to be in large groups, making sure that you have your mask on and are not embarrassed. sure that you have your mask on and are not embarrassed to wear that mask. Younger folks are beginning to show as a large percentage of the new COVID cases, and of course, most of them with their health and their youth, do not have to fear serious illness. But what we do know is that a large percentage, over 80% of the deaths, as well as the number of new cases, are unvaccinated individuals. It is up to you to make a personal choice and take personal responsibility. You don't need me or anyone else sitting here today to tell you what to do. But what we do ask is that you care enough about this community, that the other citizens who reside here, that they feel safe, and that they're, they feel safe that knowing that you have taken the responsibility to do the right thing. We don't need to be a national statistics. It's embarrassing when we get all these emails, quite honestly, that say Tom Green County is one of the worst in the nation and one of the worst in the state of Texas. That's not the reputation that we want to have, not only for COVID, but again, I bring back up suicide rates. We here in Tom Green County have one of the highest suicide rates in the state of Texas. And we need to make sure that each of us take personal responsibility for caring for our fellow citizens and our family members, and knowing and letting them know that we care enough to help them through whatever crisis it is. This weekend, as we celebrate September 11th, 2021, as a 20th year anniversary, there are still many individuals out there who are suffering through PTSD, as well as other physical ailments. They helped America survive the 9/11 attacks and left in place the freedoms that we so all enjoy. And those freedoms are things today that allow you to make a personal choice about how you choose to approach the COVID-19 issue. We ask for your support. We ask that you care enough to do the right thing, take personal responsibility, and please show up Saturday night with your masks on, social distancing, to help us celebrate all those who've made our world, our lives, our city, the city that it is and the nation that it is. Thank you. Are there individuals who would like to come forward and offer public comment today? Yes, please come forward, Bishop Sis.
Thank you very much, Bishop, Bishop Mayor Gunter. I'm Bishop Michael Sis. I'm the Catholic Bishop of San Angelo. I live at 5002 Blue Grandma Trail, and I represent Roman Catholics in this part of Texas. I want to encourage you to pass a city ordinance declaring San Angelo as a sanctuary city for the unborn. I know it's something that you've been, you've been contemplating. I know that you're looking into it, and your staff is studying the matter, and I highly encourage you to pass such an ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bishop Sis. Are there other individuals who would like to come forward and offer any more comment today?
My name is Lou McLemore, and I am a post-abortion counselor at the CV Biblical Counseling Center here in town. And first of all, I want to thank you for listening and taking the time. It took me almost 30 years to face the decision of having an abort, that I had abortions. Drugs, alcohol, anger, self-hatred, that's the end result of abortion. But I never made the connection of my drugs and alcohol abuse and the abortion. For the last 11 years, I have heard that story over and over and over, the same story, trauma, guilt, shame, anger, self-hatred from women who have made that decision, regardless if they made the decision themselves or if they were forced. And we were all told the same thing, just have that abortion, you can do it right now, you're going to be okay, have it done, and you can move on with your life. And I can tell you from personal experience and many, many women, women's stories, that you do not move on with your life. Life turns into pure hell. In 2014, 2015, God opened the door for me to go to the CRTC SITF here in town. Over the years, I've seen, let's see, 67 girls up there. Thirty-two of them have now, are now productive citizens, have jobs, did not go back to drug and alcohol abuse, 35 of them. And that's 35 too many that have relapsed because they could not finish the program, they could not finish the counseling because it's too traumatic that you cannot, they could not go there because it's so painful. 80% of women that had abortions have emotional issues. Guilt, shame, anger, suicide, suicide thoughts, or suicide attempts, nightmares, not being able to connect with your children that you already have or that you're going to have, or any kind of emotional connection with anybody is close to impossible. The average age-
If you'll wrap up your comments, your three minutes.
Okay, I would just like for you to please, please consider this because this is affects, will affect our, our town. And well, just thank you.
If you plan to speak, I would ask that you come forward and line up against the walls so that we can move through as many people as possible. Thank you.
My name is Markley Dixon, Director with Right to Life of East Texas and founder of the Sanctuary Cities for the Unborn Initiative. I'm also the only named non-government actor in the lawsuit that was before the Supreme Court regarding the Heartbeat Bill. And we've been celebrating that, the fact that the Supreme Court did not do anything to stop the Texas Heartbeat Act, that right now, across the state of Texas, that we're saying no abortions performed on unborn children that have a heartbeat. What's, what's- was so encouraging. I've been to so many different cities across the state of Texas, and we're seeing this happen in other places outside of Texas. And the community rising up, that's, that's what's leading these cities to outlaw abortion. And I've been involved in all 37 in the United States, the 34 in Texas, the two in Nebraska, the one in Ohio. And for over a year now, I've been coming to San Angelo, having meetings, and the people here are ready to see abortion outlawed in San Angelo. Guys, for 48 years, women in this state have been treated horribly, that we have allowed abortion for 48 years in this state. And we're seeing so much progress now. We're seeing our senators, our representatives, our governor, you know, we have our lieutenant governor earlier this week in Atelly Town Hall was asked a question about, should Amarillo pass this ordinance? Because we have a Texas Heartbeat Act, so do we really even need to outlaw abortion in Amarillo? And Lieutenant Governor Patrick said, absolutely, we need to outlaw abortion in Amarillo. And so my encouragement to you today is, is not just to stand with your governor and lieutenant governor and attorney general, my encouragement to you today is not just to stand with your senators and representatives, but I'm encouraging you today to stand with the people of San Angelo and give them what they've been wanting for 48 years. And I'll close with this, I'm actually going to close with a verse, but I'll close with a statement and then a verse. But all over Texas, what we're seeing is the abortion facilities are packed with people rushing in to get an abortion before the heartbeat, with one exception, Lubbock, Texas. There are no abortions being performed, period, in Lubbock, Texas, right now because they passed this ordinance. My encouragement, final thing I want to say, Amos 515, I always say this, hate evil, love good, and establish justice within your city gates, and perhaps the Lord, the God of hosts, be gracious on the remnant of Joseph. Thank you all so much.
Let me just offer the following, that in October, one of the two meetings in October, our city attorney and staff will present an ordinance or a resolution to city council, and our intent is to do the following, to take that to the public for a vote. You brought up Lubbock, we want to follow Lubbock's strategy and position in terms of how they passed their sanctuary city, and this council will choose to follow that same path that Lubbock, Texas followed.
Hello, City Council and Mayor. My name is Ryan Buck. I'm the senior pastor at Emmanuel Baptist Church. And before I say my words, Brenda Gunter, I'm sorry, Mayor, thank you for being so kind to my children that spoke last-
We'd like to know how your daughter is doing, because that took a lot of courage, and we thank her for having you supporting her and giving her the courage to come forward. So-
She, she is doing very well, and I had to go back and watch her comments because I was so nervous for her, I didn't even hear a word she said. But thank you for being so kind to her. I do want to just say a few things, and I'll be short. But first off, I understand, Mayor, you're saying that your position is you want this to go to the public for a vote, but I want to speak to the rest of the city council members. We humbly ask that you take this up and put it on the agenda to vote it yourself. We've elected you to do that. And, but, I do, I do want to say, I'm just one of 4,000 members of the Concho Valley that have come and signed petitions asking for this, and you each have that voice to share. And so I just ask that you consider it. We are going to support you. We are here not to, hopefully not to be confrontational, but to just show that we feel like this is what God wants us to do, and we feel like the people of San Angelo are supporting of it. One other thing that you said, Mayor, that struck with me, I've been gone for 20 years, though I'm a son of San Angelo. I wasn't aware of the September 11th memorial that will happen Saturday, and I do think that that's something many of us have forgotten. I look forward to being there with my four children and my wife this Saturday. We will definitely be there to, to remember that and to honor that. But I want to give you a memorial, a gift that was given to me by the Catholic Diocese of, of this area, that really just brought home what we're doing here. I have one for each of you. Some people call this a 10-week-old fetus, but this is actually a 10-week-old baby. This is what a baby looks like and feels like when you hold it in your hand. Of course, most children that you hold in your hand like this are probably gone because something natural has happened to them or because somebody has chosen to take their life. That's what, that's what's at stake for this Heartbeat Bill. Texas right now is a great environment for, for the unborn, but we don't know what's going to happen in 10, 15, 20 years. But we know what can happen in San Angelo if we pass this, this ordinance to keep abortionists out of San Angelo. So please, put this on the agenda and vote on it.
Hello, my name is Danny Joe Fowler. I live at 2415 Live Oak Street. I want to thank you, Mayor, and the city council for, for allowing us to be here. This is a great opportunity to be able to voice our concerns. As a, I used to ride bucking bulls for a living. I'm not, I'm not originally from San Angelo. This used to be our main stop in the, on the PBR tour back in '03, '04, '05. It was, I had no idea. I'm from Bakersfield, California, that San Angelo would be my hometown. Only reason I want to bring that up, this community is awesome. This community really pulls together when they have concerns. I've seen that, and it's really rubbed off on me, so you know, I want to, I want to be supportive of that. I do want to encourage you to have that same fight that you have for the safety with the mask and everything, as we want, you know, for these, for the, for the right to life, to, to make San Angelo a sanctuary city. If we fight just as hard for these babies, these unborn babies, as we are trying to fight this COVID, and be, and respect others, which I respect the mask, I do care for people. I think we need to be, we need to mind of that with, with the babies. My, my cousin called me from Bakersfield one day and said she wanted to have an abortion. So I was resisting in that. I was a different person there. I had no idea why I did not want to take her to the abortion, because where we lived there in Kern County, you could not have the abortion because she had passed up the, the deadline. But if you go a little farther north, it could be done in Fresno. So she wanted, she needed a ride. Anyways, I'll spare you the long story on that. That, that child, I, I was the only one that had the opportunity to be able to take my cousin there, and my family got really upset with me because I would not do it. I said, well, you need to abort this child. She needs, she needs to go to the abortion. She's not going to be able to care for this child. God can take any bad situation and turn it into something good for His glory. That child's name is Mackenzie today. She's a 13-year-old little girl, and she is, she is top of her class, straight A student. Another family member had taken her in. The mom did go south, okay? Anything can happen. We don't, we don't have that right to say choose. I think a lot of times, and I say this with all due respect, oftentimes those abortions are based on very selfish reasons, extremely selfish reasons. I said, well, you know what, this is, this is going to do this to my career, this is going to do this to my, you know, this is, and so abortion, let's call it what it really is, let's kill the child. That's what it is. Okay, abortion just rolls off the tongue a whole lot easier, and it's smoother, so it's easier to say. That's what that is. That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, City Council and Mayor Gunter. My name is Sonia Falcon. I live on 5606 Stone Canyon Trail here in San Angelo, Texas. I'm a now 20-year-old woman here at ASU. I've been here my whole life in San Angelo, Texas, and I just want to come before you today and show you that there is an entire generation of our youth and our young adults here in San Angelo, Texas, that feels so strongly about what we want to do to our community. Just like every other generation, we are hungry to fight, we want to see the change, we want to also be the change. And it is so important to us to keep continuing this fight because we are the future of our community, whether we come back whenever we're older and out of college, whether we continue to stay here and make a career out of San Angelo, Texas. This is our home. This is where we fight, and this is where we belong. And we want, we want this change so badly, and I just wanted to come before you today to be the proof that the youth here in San Angelo, we care just as much as any other generation that lives in this city. And we hope that you see our, our desire to continue this fight and to continue to stand up for what's right. And my voice today is for the voiceless, for those who can't be here today. And I hope you, Mayor Gunter, and city council, understand that it is such an important fight for us as the youth of San Angelo. So I appreciate y'all, and I hope that y'all also continue to be the voice for the voiceless in the city.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Kathy Brown. I reside at 3518 West Beauregard, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I just, as I left last time, I thought, Lord, what would it, how would I feel if I was in their position? And you know what I was thinking? I thought, what an incredible opportunity to stand before you one day and know that I voted for life. We don't have that opportunity. I ask y'all to put it on the docket. I ask y'all to be the voice of the people. You have the opportunity to vote for life. We don't have that, but y'all do. And one day, when you stand before the Lord, you can say, yes, I voted for life. I also thought about what you said, Brenda, about this community and about what's going on, the suicide and the sickness, that's death. But here, we have the opportunity, y'all do, to vote for life. In God's kingdom, it's a great exchange, and when we stand for life, life comes. And so because of the blood of the cross, y'all have that opportunity. So I pray for y'all. It's a hard place to be, but you can never go wrong with standing for life for the Lord. And so I'm going to pray for y'all. I hope that happens. I hope it's on the docket, and I, I'm grateful that y'all have the opportunity to vote yes for life.
Hi, my name is Victor Blevins. I reside at 29 West Avenue Q. I'm not sure what district I'm in, but I just wanted to say thank you. I appreciate you. I appreciate you and, and your work. I appreciate you and your work. I believe I'm the evidence of a transformed life that's given to Jesus Christ, and I'm here just to say that we pray for you. We're not here to change your decisions or change your beliefs, but y'all are over us, and we pray for you. God has a divine order, and I believe he put y'all where y'all are. I'm a member of different prayer groups in San Angelo, and I pray for each and one, every single one of y'all. Some of y'all know me, y'all seen me at church, and I pray for y'all. Y'all are good people. We pray that you make the right decisions and that God speaks into your life. I used to be a drug dealer, gang member. Every bad part that you hear about, felony, sins, I was a part of that. I was the worst of the worst, I believe, and God has transformed me. I participated in abortions. I paid for many abortions. That was just a lifestyle that I led, and I'm not proud of it. And I actually reaped some of the, you reap what you sow, you know, for living a life that way for so long, and there's still some stuff that I battle with and that I struggle with, and I know it's part of that old life trying to catch up with me. So I depend on y'all. I depend on y'all to help keep everything in order the way it is. I have a right to vote, and so I vote for y'all. I vote because I know I have a voice, and that voice cries out, and the voice is crying out today. I think you hear it. I think you heard it last time, and I appreciate what y'all are doing. I encourage y'all, because that's an awesome thing to put it up for a vote. But also, some of y'all, y'all got elected in with the platform of pro-life. So I encourage y'all that got voted in on that platform to go ahead and pass this. Go ahead and put it up for a vote with the city council so that we could get it done. Yeah, I think that's why we're all here, you know? And I'm not trying to lean on y'all, you know? I'm just saying, this is y'all's decision, but I encourage y'all with that. I think we all encourage y'all, and we're all going to support y'all. That's why we're here, just to support. So thank you. We honor y'all in Jesus' name.
Thank you for coming forward, and thank you for having the strength and courage to turn your life around. I know that's a tough challenge, and we're glad that you were able to do it.
I'm Donald Moon. Reside at 3069 Champion Circle. Also the director of CV Biblical Counseling, and been serving in this community for a while. I want to thank each one of y'all for serving. I had the privilege, or not so privilege, of being on a city council in a different city. Can't imagine a harder job. Every time that the garbage wasn't picked up, you get called. Every time that there was a pothole in the street, you get called. And in fact, it was the first President Bush that said the hardest job that he had ever had wasn't President of the United States, but it was serving on a city council, because everybody knew their name, everybody knew his phone number, and was going to call at every complaint. So first of all, I want to thank each and every one of y'all for serving on the city council. I don't know if these guys know. But for the most part, money's not involved. You give up your time, you give up your efforts to serve here. I'm here to, we, there's been 37 cities throughout Texas that had passed this ordinance, and they passed it because the citizens of each one of those cities, they desired it, they wanted it. And out of those, the mayor and city council took the stand to go, you know, "We're going to bring it before a vote, before the city council, and not delay it any longer, or put it off and spend more money doing it." There was 36 cities that it did that. You have mentioned Lubbock, where they decided to bring that before a vote. What most people don't realize, that when Lubbock decided to bring that before a vote, that in came the abortion industry to hurry up and push and persuade that. During that particular time, 39 children were aborted or murdered while they were waiting for that vote to come. So you see, it's a bigger issue than just, "Hey, let's put it off and see what the people have to say, so we won't have that responsibility." We're San Angelo, Texas. We look at things different. We carry things different. We have people moving in from all over, because they want to be a part of San Angelo, Texas. Mayor, city council, this is not Lubbock, Texas. This is San Angelo, Texas, and we would love to see each and every one of y'all decide to bring it to a vote. And these beautiful people, as well as the overflow that I looked at, we're not going away. We love children. We love that. We're going to be here, supporting y'all, praying for y'all, and here until this is taken care of. God bless each one of y'all for serving.
Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you. My name is Marcella Capacer, 11650 Line Road. A military wife, so my driver's license is from Florida, my license plates are from Alaska. My husband and I are hoping to retire here. However, we're in a bit of a bind, because he might lose his job because of the fetal cells being used in the vaccination and that whole issue. That's another thing. We do enjoy San Angelo, and we, I actually misread our church's bulletin, and I thought we were here today to say thank you for being the 38th sanctuary city. And when I reread it again and looked up a little quick research this morning, and I found out that we weren't even on the list, because initially I thought, "Well, 38, that's not great." But we're on the list, and to find out that we weren't even on the list. So now I have a new cause for, with my fellow citizens here of San Angelo, to now fight for being the 38th, because 39th, the 40th, the 41st is unacceptable. The 38th city we need to be. Thank you.
My name is Jerry Peters. I'm the pro-life director for the Catholic Diocese of San Angelo. Geographically, we are the largest of the 15 dioceses in Texas, and we range from 100 to 150 miles in all directions. So our bishop is on the road constantly. I've been involved with pro-life activities for about 12 years, and the fight for the sanctity of life has become a part of me. One of my favorite Bible verses is from Luke 1, verse 41 and 42. "When Elizabeth heard Mary's greeting, the baby jumped in her womb. Elizabeth was filled with the Holy Spirit, and she loudly exclaimed, 'How blessed are you among women, and how blessed is the infant in your womb?'" The children in their wombs were referred to as baby and infant, and not a blob or tissue. Every now and then, the conversation I hear comes up about the misery and devastation of mankind, that mankind is enduring, and how a just God can allow for diseases and deformities among individuals, and especially small children. To me, the answer is a simple one. Since January of 1973, when Roe v. Wade was given to our nation by the Supreme Court, over 62 million babies have been killed. I believe with all my heart that God has given us multiple chances of cures to many of our diseases and answers to the many problems that face humanity. But we have killed those choices in the womb. Think of how many doctors, scientists, clergy, politicians, and many other necessary professions who have been denied their humanity out of those 62 million children. I'm pleading with you, on behalf of all the aborted children who have no voice to consider passing the resolution making San Angelo a sanctuary city. As Christians, we are told to love the sinner but hate the sin. We have no animosity for those who work in the abortion industry, and we pray for them that their eyes will be opened. While Jesus was dying on the cross, he asked the Father to forgive his persecutors. In his words, "Father, forgive them, for they know not what they do."
Thank you very much. Anyone else who would like to come forward? Please do. And again, I ask, if you plan to speak, please come up to the, closer to the front, so we can get as many people in as possible. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'll make this quick. Something came to mind. Romans chapter 1 speaks, I'll make this short, quickly, of how God can give us over to our desires. Unfortunately, our nation has a desire that's pretty immoral on a lot of things. When he releases his hand off that, you can see the destruction, and you can see how things can go south pretty quick. It doesn't take a genius to figure out that once was right is now wrong, and what was wrong seems right now. At least that's what I see. I don't know if you guys see that, but I see that. I feel almost like God has released his hand off our nation. I don't want that to happen to our city. So with that said, let me say this. Mr. Dixon, who spoke earlier, has given a letter to the mayor, which says that if the city passes the ordinance provided, which has stood firm in 37 cities, then Jonathan F. Mitchell, who represented Mr. Dixon before the Supreme Court of the United States, is willing to represent the city of San Angelo at no cost to the city and taxpayers. The city council, you have every reason to pass this ordinance at this time. Thank y'all.
Sir, could you give us your name? Your name, please?
Thank you.
Your name, please, sir?
I'm sorry. Aaron Woods, and I reside at 5166 Gray Wolf Lane.
Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning, mayor and council members. My name is Juanita Brown. I reside at 4845 Bermuda Drive here in San Angelo, Texas, and I just love each one of y'all. We pray for each one of y'all. And I just wanted to stand before you, the gentleman that you saw talk earlier, Victor Blevins, he's my son. He was taken to an abortion clinic and almost didn't make it. I said, "No." And so today, we have citizens that, and he was an evidence of where I was conditionally, emotionally, because I said yes to an abortion afterwards. So I didn't have the capacity to really raise him like I needed to, and the state of Texas got to raise him for a little bit. But today, today, that's the redemptive work of Jesus Christ that we all get to have, because I get to have life. And I've seen some of you guys, the Lord is raising me up to have a voice and get training, get understanding in our community, because I want to help. I am a healthcare professional for 30 years, and I love taking care of San Angelo people. That's what I do. I got raised by a small business. My dad had a restaurant called Paco's Place on East Harrison Bell Street, and he loved feeding people and taking care of people. The other thing that we come from is a legacy of prayer. Prayer and helping the helpless. My dad and my parents took care of orphanages. They took care of people. If you didn't have money, you could come eat at the restaurant. That's just who they were. And so they taught us how to take care of each other, and I love what you say, Mary Gunther, about taking care of each other. San Angelo is definitely a community that knows how to take care of each other. That's why people want to come, and they want to stay. They don't know what it is. But we have a lot of foreign therapists that come and work with us. They want to come back, and they keep coming back. So I appreciate the way you guys are guiding San Angelo. My life has been redeemed and restored. Today, I can be a productive citizen, but I also want to be a voice. I'm learning how to get my voice back. I'm learning how to, I want to educate people on what our rights are, what it is we stand for, and how we can be the society that God called us to be. And I think, I think I see it in San Angelo. I think that's where the light is coming, and so many things that are so beneficial, healthcare, financial, so many industries are moving to San Angelo because of what we have to offer. So I just would love for y'all to just consider putting it down the agenda. You guys are leading us in a great, great place, and we support you, we love you, and we're going to continue to pray. Thank you.
Thank you for all that you and your family have done. Thank you. Any further comments?
Good morning. I'm Pastor Bobby Roger. I live at 701 East 24th. Been the pastor of Calvary Baptist Church here in town for over 21 years, and we have a group of pastors, there are from about eight to 12 pastors that meet in a Bible study on Thursday mornings. And we, I just want to speak on behalf of them, and not assuming anything, but we've talked about these things, and we pray for our city, we pray for you, and we pray that you will indeed put this on the agenda and get it through, because we represent hundreds of people in our churches, and I know the Catholics have spoken about their group. I represent a group of Southern Baptist pastors, and we are in favor of you putting this on the agenda. And if it goes to the polls, they'll vote for it, but you can save us a lot of money and a lot of trouble if you just go ahead and take care of it right now. God bless you. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. I don't see any, I don't see anyone else walking forward, so at this point, we will move on for further comment beyond the sanctuary city comments. Is there anyone here who would like to offer any other comments in regards to any issues other than the sanctuary city this morning? With none, we will now move into the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, I will ask each council member if there are any items that they would like to have pulled from the consent agenda, and I will start with Larry.
No ma'am.
Elaine.
No ma'am.
Lucy.
No ma'am.
Harry.
No ma'am.
Tom.
No ma'am.
Tommy.
No ma'am.
Then may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as written?
No ma'am.
Moved by Tommy, seconded by Elaine or Larry. It's a dual second.
Yes, ma'am.
Have a duel?
We got a duel.
Yeah, you got a duel.
Any public comment on the consent agenda items today? With none, we will take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, the consent agenda has passed. Tom, I know you need to leave, so I could offer up a restroom break, but I'd rather kind of move forward, because you're here, if that's okay with everyone.
I can hold it.
Okay. All right, on the regular agenda, comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appallants are exempt from the time limit above, and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. Item 6A, discussion and consideration of matters related to the fiscal year 2021/2022 operating budget, including 1, first public hearing and introduction of an ordinance of the city of San Angelo approving and adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021, and ending September 30, 2022. This budget will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by $619,490, or 1.51% increase, and of that amount, $669,625 is tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll. And 2, conducting a separate vote to ratify the property tax revenue increase reflected in the budget, and place the adoption of this tax rate on the agenda for the September 21, 2021 regular meeting of the city council as an action item. Tina, you're on.
Thank you, mayor. Tina Dersky, Director of Finance. I am going to, I'm not sure why the slides are not up here. If you'll just bear with me a moment. As you stated in the caption, mayor, this will be the first public hearing and introduction of the 2022 budget ordinance, and we will, at the end of the item, conduct a separate record vote to ratify it. So in the budget ordinance, of course, we've been directed to include health insurance raises and three additional positions in the water department for backflow prevention in accordance with TCEQ regulations. The budget ordinance includes the following provisions. We go through these with you every year, just so that you're aware of what you are approving within the ordinance. It authorizes employee classifications and compensation schedules, provides for general appropriation of funds, reserves to the city council, the authority to transfer those appropriations, provides for laps of all an encumbered or unobligated fund for the prior fiscal year, and for carryover of all of those encumbered amounts to the next fiscal year. Reserves to the city council the power, as permitted by law, to amend or make changes in the budget. It provides the authority for city manager to make certain adjustments within the budget for movement within a fund, to reduce revenues and expenditures when they're in the same amount, to make changes under $50,000 cumulative that are necessary for purchases and grants, and for grants- for purchases and grants, and for grants designated and restricted revenues and their corresponding expenditures. It provides authority for city council to authorize amendments for funds over $50,000 for purchases, grants, or interlocal agreements, if city council has already approved the expenditure. It authorizes city manager or his designee to apply for, accept, and execute certain grants that are listed within the budget ordinance document, authorizes city manager to execute certain interlocal agreements that don't require an expenditure, and it provides for the filing of the budget. Again, this is the first public hearing and introduction of the ordinance adopting the 2022 budget. And I will pause here for any questions, comments, or discussion.
I'm going to start. Larry, do you have any questions for Tina?
Currently, what we have prepared as directed was the tax rate at .770. We are prepared and open to any discussion or further direction. If that should change today, we can bring it back upon second reading.
Do we need to discuss that now, or is that part two of this? Have you introduced only part A?
That's actually item B, so if you want to go ahead and read that, we could discuss both and then take separate votes on A and B.
Okay, we'll do that. Introduction of an ordinance leveling property taxes for the city of San Angelo for the 2021 tax year. Public hearing and first reading of an ordinance fixing and leveling ad valorem taxes for the current tax year for use in support of the municipal government of the city of San Angelo, Texas, for the 2021-2022 budget year. Providing for the assessment and collection thereof, providing when the tax shall become due, providing when the tax shall become delinquent, providing for exemptions, providing for severability, providing for publication on the city-operated website, and providing for an effective rate. And then I'll do item C, first reading of an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020 and ending September 30, 2021 for reimbursed expenses, grants, and capital. So those are all under item, well, it's the entire agenda.
It is.
So there you go. I want to offer up a couple comments and some things that I have been thinking about as it relates to our property tax rate. I believe strongly that our citizens have felt that our property tax rate is something that needs to be relooked at and reconsidered. At the same point in time, what I also understand is that the citizens believe strongly that our streets and the repair of our streets and the reworking of our streets is one of their number-one priorities. So in my mind, there's an option that we could consider as a city council, and that option would be the following, that we maintain the .7760 property tax rate, but designate the city that the difference between the property tax rate dollars at the .7700 and the .7760 be put in a separate fund that would accumulate and be used and designated only as a street fund. And that would reserve some of those dollars on an ongoing basis to ensure that we, the city council, say strongly to the citizens, we know the streets need work. We know that that takes a lot of money, and we know that in the past, we have not created a street fund that specifically says these property tax dollars will, in fact, be put in a separate fund and will fund street repairs and reconstruction of streets. So I would like, if possible, for our city council to add some comments to this and see if that's something that you would consider and support at this point.
Here, here.
Harry?
Mayor, I applaud you. I think this is the right direction to go, and certainly putting that money back in a specific fund that will accumulate dollars that we can utilize for the streets, street maintenance, is the appropriate thing to do and what citizens expect us to do. So thank you, and I support this.
Thank you. Any further comment? Tom?
Just echo what Harry said. We look at those funds, and it's hard to see in a long-term vision how they go, but it's our legacy, and it's what we campaigned on with streets. I love the fact that we earmark this for that and go forward with it. If it wasn't to go that way, I wasn't going to fight against anything that's a budget proposal. I think what we've done the past 30 days has been outstanding for entire staff, and this complements and finishes up a circle. And I'll go with Harry. I applaud you for doing that, so I'm all in support of the 776 with the earmark.
Here, here, Brenda. I applaud you for coming up with that. Tina, let me ask you a question. Would we designate the .006 as the portion for that fund, or would we give a specific amount? Seems to me it would be better to do the .006.
Yes, I would recommend doing that, and that also wouldn't allow that amount to grow from year to year as the property tax valuations grow.
Okay, all right. Mayor, I totally support that. That's a good job.
Any other comments?
I echo everything the guys on that side said, Mayor. It's just fantastic.
Good side. Well, we'll do the good side.
I just wanted to say that I am so proud to be on this council that came up with this idea. It's a shame that we didn't have it before, but sooner, I mean, better late than never. And let's move on.
All right, then with that, let's take a vote. And so I'm going to ask for a vote in support of the .776 with the .006. Am I doing the right number zeros? Okay.
Yes.
Be put in a separate fund and designated as a street fund, and then as we move forward through the next year, et cetera, we will look for other opportunities to fund that street fund and continue to designate dollars that can be set aside so everyone knows and that the street, Shane Kelton understands our commitment to the work that's been done that will continue to need to be done. And so with that, we are going to take an individual vote, one person at a time, in support of that. So, yes, wait a minute. Hold on. Yes.
Mayor, we will need this specific language first read with the motion to ratify the property tax revenue and then have the vote on the tax rate.
Okay, so as I go from person to person, you will read this statement and vote yes or no. But Larry, did you have something you wanted to add first?
The .006 is, you know, it's nice and it's convenient, but there is no reason that we can't fence a slightly larger number.
No, I don't support that right now. And if you choose to do that, you can vote accordingly to that number and that comment, but the rest of us will, well, everyone gets to do their own thing. So with that, I'm going to start with Tommy.
What we could do is one person could read this as the motion, and then everybody could say a or nay as we go through.
Okay, I'm going to read this motion, conduct a separate vote for, a separate vote to ratify the property tax revenue increase reflected in the budget and place the adoption of this tax on the agenda for the September 21, 2021 regular meeting of the city council as an action item. Please tell me yea or nay.
Have a second for that first?
Motion and a second.
You have to have a second.
The first person to give their vote can be the second.
Okay, so Tommy?
I vote aye.
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 Thank you. Motion passes seven zero. Are there any questions relative to how this will be managed? I'm sure our finance department, in coordination with the city manager, will set up the appropriate funds and accountability to make sure those funds are designated as the beginning work for a street fund concept.
Yes, ma'am. This will be a new fund that we'll set up, and you'll see every month in your financials.
Thank you. Okay, yes. You know what? I should have done that, and I'm going to just go back a minute and let you come forward and offer some public comment, because I did not do that, Ginger, and I should have. Next time, stand up, use your voice, and shut me up long enough for you to come up and offer your voice.
I will definitely ask. Ginger Moore, 4178 Rivale Lane, San Angelo, Texas. I've been a resident for almost 40 years. Love San Angelo and thank you for your service. Yes, I just want to know, if you're going to raise the tax rate, why don't we just keep the tax rate the same and designate part of what you need?
That's what we just did.
Oh, so you're not raising the tax rate from last year?
No, it's the same tax.
Same tax rate?
Same. The reason it was a conversation, Ginger, was in the past meetings, I had asked for support to lower the tax rate to .770.
Okay.
Okay.
So I missed that. Maybe you should include that in the notes for the rest of the San Angelo, because, so there won't be any misinterpretation.
There's no increase in the tax rate. Not. We are just designating a piece of that tax rate to specifically go to a street fund.
Well, that's absolutely perfect. Thank you.
That is the motion. But thank you for verifying that for us, because it gave us an opportunity to be more vocal about it. All right, with that, I guess that means that we just passed A, B, and C? No, we just passed C.
We passed B, and so A is the first public hearing, first public hearing and introduction to adopt the actual budget ordinance document, which includes these initiatives that we've discussed and been directed to include. So I just wanted to pause here in case you had any questions or discussion on this direction.
Are there any questions on this? Then I'm going to read, do I need to read the motion on that?
You do not have to read for this one, no ma'am. Just a motion and.
May I have a motion? A motion by Lucy, and seconded by Elaine. Any public comment on this? With no public comment, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes seven zero.
So Mayor, that handled A, one, and two, so now we need to go on to B.
Okay. And B is?
B is introduction.
Actual tax rate.
Okay.
Okay, so this would change to .776 on this slide for the first public hearing and introduction of the ordinance levying the property tax. And again, here, this would change to .776 with that .006 going back to maintenance and operations, but through your direction and action today, that will be restricted into a new fund.
Just to make sure everyone understands, we are not, we are not NOT, not increasing property tax rate. We're just designating a piece of it to go towards a street fund so that the citizens understand that the streets are our top priority. With that, may I have a motion?
Sorry. We do have specific language designated by the state for this one, too.
Okay. I move that the property tax rate.
Will that 2.3 change?
Yeah, that'll change.
Okay. There, now it's correct.
Is the 2.3 still correct?
Yes.
Because it's based off of, it's about, yeah, it's not, the .776 maintains, it's about because you have additional property tax, properties on the tax roll, the dollars increased, so it's a percent increase in total dollars, but no change in tax rate.
That's not what it says there.
The 2.3 is correct.
But it says raise property tax rate by increase.
We've, this has been in the past, we've had that before. To clarify, that's just the language that we have.
Required by the state. It's just required language. We are not increasing the property tax rate.
Total property tax dollars have gone up over the previous year's total property tax dollars with no increase and no change in the property tax rate. But if your total dollars of property tax valuations go up, that tax rate stays the same. You just raise more dollars because the dollar valuation base of property tax dollars is larger.
Mayor, I understand that, but that first line says that the property tax rate be increased.
You're correct, and we agree with you, and we have gone over and over and over it, but this is language required by the state regardless of how it's interpreted.
State's the heavy hand here.
Seven seven six. I just.
We reiterate that the property tax will remain the same.
Property tax rate maintains the same, but we ask that everyone out there listening continue to invest in this community, make, and build new buildings, build new houses, increase their commercial properties so that we continue to have more dollar investment in the growth of the economics of this city. Okay, with that, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .7760 per 100 valuation, which is effectively a 2.3% increase in the tax rate. This is what the state demands that we say, so we're saying it. Okay, any public comment? With none, we'll take. Yes, oh, please come forward. Hi, Suzy.
Suzy Smith, 3601 Willbrook. And, you know, it's, when you use words that don't mean what they say, it really creates confusion for people understanding, and it gives rise to distrust. So, I mean, you say it's an increase, and then you say it's not an increase. And I can, I can think of other things in the past year and a half that, you know, have not been what they said it was. So.
You're correct on that, and obviously, there's council members up here who also have concern about what we're saying. I'm sorry we have to follow the state law on this, but I assure you, the property tax rate is .7760. The reason that 2.3% increase in the tax rate is because of increased valuations and new properties coming into the property tax base. It reads strong, I agree.
Sounds like a lot of double talk.
It does. I would agree with you, but this council has voted to stay at .7760 property tax rate, rate, percentage. Okay, with that, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Do I need to do individual persons on this? It passed seven zero. Property tax rate stays the same. Julia, keep me straight. Are we on item C now?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could, while she's bringing that up, to make it even more confusing.
Do not.
If you had stayed with the 770 and actually decreased the rate, you still would have had to read that crazy language from the state, even though the rate would have gone down. And so when we had a citizen say something about double talk, it is language forced upon us by state statute, and we agree and understand, and it is a different.
Again, I repeat, .7760 is the tax rate, which is the exact same .7760 in last year's budget and the past 10 years' budgets. We have not raised the property tax rate .7760 for 10 years. We have maintained.
I suspect that's why the attorneys get so much money.
Okay, where are we?
Okay, we're on item C, which is a budget amendment for budgeting for new revenues and expenditures. And we're having difficulty finding our slides here, so if you need me to pass this document around, I can, but hopefully you have your background as well.
Is everyone clear? We have not raised property tax, right?
I am clear.
Okay.
Say it again, Brenda.
We have not raised the property tax rate. .7760 has been the existing property tax rate for 10 years, maybe 12 years. 12 years.
It's been the same or lowered for at least 12 years, since 2000.
We haven't raised it for 12 years, so it couldn't have been lower. It'd have to be the same. .7760. It has been higher.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so for the budget amendment, the first item we have for you is a budget amendment for information technology. We are budgeting for a new phone system in the amount of about $92,000 that will be paid for through existing departmental savings.
Why are we having a new phone system?
I've asked Bucky Hasty, our IT director, to be here to answer that question.
Good morning, Council. My name is Bucky Hasty. I'm the IT director for the city of San Angelo. Our existing phone system is over 12 years old, and it's in need of replacement.
Why is it in need of replacement?
Software, security issues, the hardware is failing. It doesn't have quite the options that we can get with a new phone system that will allow better incoming call direction for departments.
And the question is, everyone always wants to know why human isn't answering that phone. So this doesn't give us a human answering the phone?
No, no humans.
Mayor, one of the problems we've begun having, really kind of the straw that broke the camel's We need a system which will allow us to have that human contact when we're trying to work out, establish a new customer account or work out an issue on a customer account. We can't have the system hanging up on our customers. And so we have, the initiative was, Bucky has talked about this aging infrastructure, but the initiative was pushed harder by planning as they tried to improve their phone-based experience. But then when we started, the system started dropping customers, we felt like we don't need that customer service experience to be worse. It's already a difficult situation at times.
What if I call you and leave a message while I'm on hold? Does this new phone system allow me to leave a message instead of staying on hold for the 77th caller?
It gives us a lot of new flexibilities for message delivery.
Does it take voicemail messages?
Yes, it will.
While the other 77 people are on hold?
Yes, it will.
Because that's, well, because, number one, a lot of times, planning did not realize people were calling in and leaving messages, so it was like an un, people didn't believe that they.
The new system gives us a lot more flexibility with how incoming calls are handled and how voicemails are delivered, and just to make sure people get to a person if one's available, and if not, that a callback is received.
Are there other questions from council concerning this new phone system? All right, thank you, Bucky.
The next budget amendment is to budget for reimbursed stop-loss coverage in our health insurance fund, and that is going to be used to offset claims expenses in that fund.
To do what?
To offset expenditures, claims expenditures in the health insurance fund. So once we hit a certain point in insurance claims, we hit what's called stop-loss, and Brian Kendrick can probably speak to that better than what I can if you'd like a little more information.
I would.
Okay.
Good morning. Brian Kendrick, Director of HR and Risk Management. So if you'll remember, during the, one of the budget work sessions, we talked about the health insurance and some of the experience that we've had this year. This year, we had a lot of, and we talked specifically about stop-loss. This year, we've had a lot of more activity that reached the stop-loss level, and so we had a much higher-than-usual reimbursement from that. And so this is just capturing that revenue that we've already deposited and the expenditure that we've already made in the fund. So it, I mean, it really just offsets, it's a, it's a net zero between the two things.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and I believe the next three are all related to grants. We're budgeting $96 in revenue and expenditure. That is just truing up the CRSA Act funds that were received by the airport. Once all airports had accepted or declined, they did it on a percentage basis, so they got an extra $96, and they want to spend it. And then the next one is for.
On what?
The next one is for Grant 44, which is the Terminal Apron Rehabilitation. That's 100% funded by the FAA, and the amount is $1,112,701. And Grant 45, which is the Airport Rescue Grant under ARPA, is 100% FAA-funded as well, and the amount is $1,327,214.
Are there questions for Tina on any of these accepting of grants and the dollars? All right, with that, a move by Lane, a second by, second by Tommy. Any public comment? No public comment, then we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We got through 6A, B, and C with not a whole lot of confusion, but .7760 is the property tax rate, which has been the same property tax rate for 12 years. We will now move into the closed session, executive session under the provision of Government Code Title V, Open Government Ethics, subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirement That Meetings Be Open Under the Following Sections, Section A, or A, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding Lake Nazworthy Sewer Project Easement. And with that, we will move into closed session. Tom, are you going to be able to join us, or are you going to have to go? Okay, thank you. Travel safe. On September the 9th, at this point, there are no items to be announced following executive session. We will move on to consideration of approving various board nominations, so Trinidad Agari, SMD4, for the Planning Commission, to an unexpired term ending January 2023. May I have that motion?
May I approve?
Lucy made, second by Tommy. Any public comment? With none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes seven zero. Announcements, six zero, sorry, yes, six zero. Announcements and consideration of future agenda items. I just want to make one final comment on the tax rate, and that is the intent, our intent today was to utilize the existing property tax rate with the idea that we would designate a part of that tax, property tax rate, converted to dollars into a separate fund called the Street Fund. And that Street Fund will be the beginning of an opportunity for us to have a part of the General Fund designated for street repairs, construction, et cetera. So this is a big step forward to assure the citizens that we do, in fact, hear you. We know that the streets are one of your top priorities, and we are going to continue to designate funds into the Street Fund to ensure that the dollars are there to do the work that is needed. With that, may I have a motion for adjournment?
I may.
A second? All, any public comment? With none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.